Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and get going. So Mike, the two Mikes had to run to two different places to get things, but we still have a quorum, so we can still get started. And so if we look at the agenda, agenda item number one is the call to order welcome and roll call. And I believe all trustees are here. Michael, I think, is using the restroom, and Mike was running to his car, and he's here, and I think everybody else is here. And so now, item number two is the pledge of allegiance, and would you mind leading us, student trustees, again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. I'll make one suggestion if it's okay with the trustees. We also have an addendum, which is currently identified as 8A9, which is to award bids for furniture at Lowell. It is pretty much parallel and somewhat identical to item 8A5, so I would suggest we just stick it in to follow five, because that way the discussions will be pretty much the same, and we won't be kind of doing them at two completely different times in the agenda. Is that okay with revising the agenda in just that one fashion? Okay. So with that, then we'll go on to item number four, which is to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of March 14th, 2017. They're attached, beginning on page six. Are there any corrections or additions that anyone saw? Seeing no one speaking up, then is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting from March 14th? Moved by trustee Bracead, seconded by trustee McDonald. All those in favor of approving those board meeting minutes from March 14th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Elizabeth? Now we move on to item five, which is public comment. This is the time, one of two opportunities at school board meetings, that the public has the opportunity to come and tell the board members anything that is concerning you, or actually anything that falls underneath district supervision that you'd like to bring to our attention, because if it's a new item and it's not something we're going to be discussing on the agenda, it's considered a non-agenda item, and therefore there won't be discussion, because there hasn't been notice to the public that the board itself would be discussing that item. So you won't hear any discussion from the board, but if it's something that needs discussion at a later time, we can always add it on to the agenda. So we ask everyone who wants to make public comment, if you have an unusual spelling of your name, to spell it for Elizabeth, our secretary, and then if you represent an organization, to identify the organization and try to keep the comments to about three minutes long, so there's time for all comments. So anyone have a comment on a non-agenda item? And if you could turn on the microphone as well.
There we go. Okay. Thanks. I've been running late all day, but I made it to the umpteenth thing. My name is Gwen Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I am the city councilperson for Ward Three, and I have numerous kids in MCPS. I came tonight. I live very close to St. Joseph's School, and there's been an ongoing issue with the opening and closing of the St. Joseph's Playground, which is the old Roosevelt Playground. The Missoula Catholic Schools started renting Roosevelt in 2000, and for their grade school in 2005, they purchased it. And part of the buy-sell agreement, and later in a covenant, was the fact that the playground would be kept open to the public per its historical use, as every other playground of an MCPS school is in Missoula. Starting in 2012, there were periodic closures because of dog waste and vandalism, and I started having a lot of conversations with them, and have been working on this for five years now, and I've kept Mark in the loop, Mr. Thane, as we try to get it reopened. It is a huge asset in our neighborhood. I really want it to be reopened. My kids are older now, and they're going in different directions, but the amount, huge amount of hours in the evenings, in the summertime, that my kids would spend down there with basketball or soccer ball, is huge, and I look at all the kids in our neighborhood, and I feel so bad if they don't have this opportunity, because you can't really kick a ball around at Rose Park, it goes into Brooks Avenue, and Willard is on the other side of Stevens. So this is really, really important. The Rose Park Neighborhood Council had a very long two-hour meeting, including the chief of police, in February, and I have Missoula Catholic Schools' response. I appreciate that it is a little bit softer, but the bottom line is, this playground will still be closed for much of the main hours when it would otherwise be used. And frankly, I find the arguments of vandalism and dog waste as being something that they probably knew about when they purchased it in 2005, and you just have to deal with it. Both the police and the neighborhood council have offered to help to the best of our abilities. So I'm hoping this is an ongoing conversation. I just wanted to apprise you of the situation. I think the Rose Park Neighborhood Council will be having a meeting April 26th to discuss this in greater detail, and there'll probably be more meetings about that. So I'm not going away quietly. And I know that your plate is full with everything you have going on right now, but I just think this is extremely important, and buyer's remorse does not change a contract in the long run. This is a contract. So I have copies of the letter. I will leave this with you, and you have my contact information, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Is, are there any other comments on non-agenda items? And I said it's a good time just to give us information or let us know what you're concerned about, and if it needs further attention at a different time, we'll put it on the agenda. Thanks, Gwen.
Good evening, everybody. I just thought it might be a good idea to introduce myself. I'm going to be taking Debbie Dupree's seat on the board in about a month. And my name is Elliot Dugger, and I live in the Potomac. So I just wanted you guys to get a face with the name, because I realize I don't know anyone in here, except for Marcia Holland, who's been a law school professor of mine. So greetings to everybody, and I look very forward to serving. If you have any questions for me, feel free.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other comment, public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, then seeing none, let me just pass this along. We move on to item number six, which are reports and announcements. So the first reports are the reports from the student trustees. So we'll get the student trustees who are here in the room, and then we'll be calling Seeley Swan. So should we start with Gabby, and just move down the table?
Good evening. I hope everyone had an amazing weekend. Now back to some business. After spring break, Hellgate Orchestra had a concert on March 29th. Moving right along, on April 1st, Hellgate Softball started up their season. Then on April 4th, Hellgate Track started up their season as well. Also, on April 4th through 5th, parent-teacher conferences, conferences, excuse me, were held. Also on the 5th was the start of the District Music Festival at Hellgate, and Hellgate bands performed for the adjudicators at districts. They were judged on ability of prepared music and sight-reading. That being said, on April 7th, we did not have school, but Hellgate Softball had a game. Then the last day of, then on Saturday, Districts was concluded on April 8th. Also, on the same day, Hellgate Tennis had matches here in town, and Hellgate Softball had two games. On top of all that busyness, there was also our Hellgate Prom at Fort Missoula, which brings us to today, where Hellgate Softball, Track, and Tennis all have events. That is all I have for today, and thank you.
Okay, so some things happening at Big Sky. So obviously Brianna's not here tonight, because she is practicing for our school musical that will be performed next week at Big Sky, and it is called All Shook Up. And then the 30 members of the Big Sky Band went to New Orleans over spring break for exposure to culture and music, and they also visited elementary schools in the Ninth Ward and had music workshops at Tulane. And then Aerie had their 10th Annual Dana Gallery last week. Our softball team is taking on Glacier and Flathead today at home, and our prom is coming up on April 28th, and it will be at the Fairgrounds. Our HOSA club competed at state, and Big Sky had four people qualify for nationals in Orlando, Florida. And one of our students, Betsy, won an award for aspirations in computing for 2017, and she was one of two girls from Montana to be recognized on the national level. And this was also the first time that Montana students have won national honors for this award. Junior Health Science Academy members, their job shadows are underway, and they will be going over to 20 different locations all over the community. And then Big Sky's getting ready to compete in the Montana State Envirothon in Lewistown. IB exams are coming up, and we have over 30 students taking the tests, and I know everyone's pretty stressed out about it. And Big Sky now has an online sun journal, which is our school newspaper, so that's pretty cool. And the robotics club recently went to Calgary for a competition. And our NHS Easter egg hunt was last Saturday, and we raised over $100. And that's all I have. Good evening. Sentinel HOSA recently returned from its state leadership conference, which was held on March 20th through the 21st in Helena, where over 400 students from across the state competed. The conference determined who qualified to attend the International Leadership Conference to be held in Orlando in June. Sentinel High School students did extremely well, and Joyce Liu was elected state president. Sentinel's robotics team competed in the FRC competition last month. Sentinel's Brain Bowl sent two teams to compete at the Spring Frenchtown Academic Tournament on April 5th. Eight schools, Frenchtown, Sentinel, Billings, Skyview, Beaverhead County, Manhattan, Lima, Hamilton, and Three Forks, sent a total of 20 teams. Sentinel's two teams earned second and third place honors at the event. The second-place team consisted of Leah Tenere, Zach Tenere, Anna Von Essen, Dakota Thomas, and Peyton Briska. The third team consisted of Jackson Petty, Kellen Rosenquist, Jared Rosenquist, Max Dupraz, and Maeve Monahan. The Brain Bowl will be competing at the state championship tournament on April 25th at the University of Montana. Sentinel musicians performed a Sentinel on Friday, April 7th, for the District Music Festival. Over 25 Sentinel students who are part of the Sentinel Journalism Department participated in the annual Journalism Day, which took place at the University of Montana on March 31st. The broadcast journalism students received an award for the best broadcast in the state, and the Sentinel Conus students were awarded second-place recognition for AA high school newspapers. Sentinel Theater and Choir will be presenting Bye Bye Birdie on May 19th and May 20th at 7:30 PM in the Margaret Johnson Theater. Tickets will sell for $10 apiece. Spring sports are off to an amazing start. Last Friday and Saturday, softball played all three Billings teams. They will be playing Glacier and Flathead at home tonight, and cross-town Hellgate this Thursday. Junior Emily Malone put her name in the Sentinel record books with her javelin throw last Tuesday at the Kalispel Glacier-Missoula Sentinel Track and Field Duel. Malone's dual-winning throw was 146 feet and 6 inches, which is a Sentinel school record. It was also the fourth-best throw in the nation as of Saturday, according to athletic.net. Track is traveling to Butte today and will be competing in the annual MCPS Invitational this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Dorn Blazer Field. Tennis played Kalispel and Helena last Saturday. Junior Jake Treese didn't drop a set in his number-one matchup against Helena Capitals' Colin Gilletzi. Treese won 6-0, 6-0, helping the Spartans take a 7-1 team win from the Bruins. Tennis will be traveling to Kalispel this Saturday. Both Jake Treese and Emily Malone are in contention for Missoula Prep Athletes of the Vote of the Week, so you all should go vote. The ACT will be administered to all juniors next Wednesday, April 19th. Eighth-grade orientation will be held at Sentinel on Wednesday, April 26th, from 12:30 to 2:30 PM. The goal of the orientation is to get our incoming freshmen excited to become Spartans, get them involved, and to build relationships. Forty-one Sentinel DECA members will be traveling to Anaheim, California, in late April to compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference. Sentinel DECA would also like to congratulate Dylan Haggert and Sarah Shustari, who are the recipients of the 2017 DECA Emerging Leader Honor Award. This is the highest honor bestowed by DECA Incorporated. Dylan Haggert and Emma O'Connor were the Elks Students of the Month for February, and Spencer Schock and Brittany Delridge were the Elks Students of the Month for the month of March. The Sentinel Special Olympics and varsity basketball players teamed up to play a spirited basketball game during the Respect Assembly on March 30th. It was a great display of respect, friendship, sportsmanship, and teamwork. Sentinel staff will be selecting one male and one female Spartan of the Month for the remainder of the school year to be Sentinel Students of the Month. These students are voted on with the criteria that teachers will be voting for students who exemplify our core Spartan values of respect, responsibility, and engagement. Winners will receive a prime parking spot on the Bancroft Parking Lot. The Sentinel Students of the Month for April are Ariana Silva and Colter Clark-Michaud. I hope the last quarter of the school year treats you all well. Thank you.
Thanks. And now we'll see if we can put this in here or if I can see it. I'm glad you had this.
Hello?
Hello, this is Mark at the MCPS school board meeting, and we've got you on the microphone.
Oh, hi. Okay, I'll get started then. So at Seeley Swan High School, in track, both boys and girls' track teams are off to a strong start. They've had three full track meets, and the most recent track meet they had back on Saturday had to be cut short because of weather. In golf, their third meet was today, and everyone did very well. In rodeo, Irene Anderson has competed in three rodeos already this season. She competes in barrel racing, team roping, breakaway roping, pool bending, and gilp tying. And she's currently in the top 20 in pool bending and barrel racing in the state. In shooting, this past weekend, three Series One high school students, Justin Thomas, Sam Weichenberger, and myself, traveled down to Leighton, Utah to compete in the CMP Western Regional Championships, where the first team placed second and the second team placed fourth. The team will then move on to nationals in June at Camp Perry, Ohio. Currently, Justin Thomas is in Colorado Springs at the Olympic Training Center, where he's competing in the men's junior Olympics for smallboard. And I'll be headed down to the junior Olympics this weekend to compete in their red form smallboard as well. Outside of sport, prom is coming up for a Series One. It's this Friday in the new auditorium. The theme is vintage Hollywood. There'll be a popcorn buffet, a Hollywood sign, and even a red carpet. We also have the Celebration of the Arts, which is from 7:00 to 8:30. It's open to the public, and desserts will be served. The program consists of Scene One, Act One of the drama class's play, We'll Be Right Back After This Murder. Performances by the Seeley Swan High School Band and Choir, and as well as the Swan Valley Band and the Silver Bell Carol. And the creative writing class will also be reading some poetry. And then the drama class will perform the full play, We'll Be Right Back After This Murder, at 7:00 PM on April 28th at the Seeley Swan High School new auditorium. Tomorrow, the government class will be taking a trip to Helena to visit the Capitol Building, where they will meet with their senators, representatives, and the governor. Student council is planning to do an Earth Day activity, and the Alpine Artisans of Two Valley Stage are bringing the Sapphire Trio to Seeley Swan High School on April 23rd at 3:00 PM. And then we have Cora Group. She received the Accepting the Challenge of Excellence Award and $500 scholarship from the Missoula County Exchange Club, which is really awesome. And then lastly, back in September, a group of Series One high school teachers, students, and parents took a trip down to Stanford University to participate in Challenge Success, where they created a plan for improving our school. They created a mission statement at the school, and it was, and they came up with, "We believe in a school and community that values diversity, respects differences, supports one another, and fosters confidence in individuality." Since then, the entire school has participated in activities that follow the mission statement. There have been group discussions and other lunch activities, making people interact with people they don't normally talk with. Next week, we'll be headed back down to Stanford and follow up and review the plans for the future Challenge Success activities. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Ibi.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Have a good night. And as I indicate at every board meeting, I know student trustees are very busy, so stay as long as you want, but if you have other tasks demanding your attention, feel free to leave as well. So we'll move on to 6B, which are announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you, and you heard Ibi mention the Celebration of the Arts tomorrow night at Seeley Swan High School. Certainly looking forward to it, and encourage anyone who's available to consider attending. We have in the audience tonight Russ Hendrickson, and Russ is here because of an item that will appear on the agenda later, but I wanted to seize the opportunity to do a little introduction and a bit of recognition for Russ. So Russ, if you'd stand up for a minute. You know, in basketball lingo, it's really something to have a double-double. And we watched the basketball tournament over the last couple of weeks, and there were a few of those great performances. Well, Russ had his own double-double in the last month. There are two professional organizations, which are organizations that are near and dear to our hearts with regard to technology. The first is MEATA, which is the Montana Education Technology Association, and Russ was actually instrumental in helping form that group, and he led that group over an extended period of time. And he was recognized by MEATA as the Montana Education Technologist of the Year. So we congratulate him on his first award. Then unbeknownst to Russ, he was actually planning to travel to Portland, Oregon for the NCC E conference, and NCC is the Northwest Council for Computers in Education. And he was very fortunate, and his wife decided to accompany him on the trip, and actually managed to go to the banquet with him. And lo and behold, Russ had no idea that he was going to be recognized by the Northwest Council as the Technology Leader of the Year for the Northwest Region. So again, completing his sweep and the double-double, we certainly want to recognize Russ. But more importantly, technology's taken on a very prominent role in the district, and Russ's official title is Senior Information Systems Manager, but essentially, he manages the technology teams on the ground. And over the last couple of months, he's actually assumed a number of additional duties, primarily related to the bond projects and to the technology infrastructure that we're working to implement. And I can't express, really, how pleased I am with the work Russ has done and how seamlessly the transition's been the last couple of months. And we are truly fortunate as a community to have Russ, and certainly want you to know how much we value the work you do. So congratulations on your awards, and we hope you'll prominently display them, so we can all check them out. Along those same lines, you may have actually seen the news releases in this regard, but the Missoula County Public Schools' Music Education Program has been honored with a Best Communities for Music Education Award from the NAMM Foundation. What's special about this is this is a highly competitive award, and only 4% of the school districts across the country are so named. The NAMM Foundation is the National Association of Music Merchants, and there are about 10,300 member districts around the world, and its mission is to advance the participation in music. And they really base it on scientific research that talks about the importance of music in developing students' cognitive skills. And so we are very fortunate, and certainly kudos to John Combs and company for completing the application and for the outstanding recognition that they have received for the district. On April 20th, we will be celebrating our Most Inspiring Student Award Dinner, and it will be at the Doubletree again at 6:00 PM, and I know a number of trustees plan to attend. And it's always a highlight of the year to recognize students who are nominated from their schools for having met some significant challenges and succeeded. So we hope you can consider joining us there. We are planning to afford opportunities for trustees to do a walkthrough of the new facilities at Franklin and Lowell. We're looking at May 2nd, which is a Tuesday, and we're going to do it during our normal cabinet time at 8:00 AM, and we'll begin at Franklin, is that correct, at 8:00, and then transition to Lowell likely at about 9:00 AM. So we would encourage all trustees who are available to join us. We recognize it's a busy time. We have a couple of high school trustee visits coming up still this month, and then we have a number of meetings associated with the second week of May. But if you can afford to be there, we'd love to have you join us for the tour. We do have some other dates of note. Monday, April 24th is a professional development day for district staff, so school will not be in session for the students, but the staff will be engaged in professional learning activities. The regular board meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, April 25th, will be conducted at Seeley Swan High School, and we'll have an opportunity again to see the new facility there. We have trustee building visits scheduled for Thursday, April 27th, at Willard Alternative High School Program and Hellgate High School. And then, let's see, I thought we had a second board visit this month. Oh, it is Friday, April 21st, at Sentinel High School and Big Sky High School. We will have a special board meeting that may not be on all your calendars. It will be on Thursday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. The intent will be to seat the new trustees and to have a board work session for reorganization of the board. And on page 20 in the board packet, that day of the week is listed incorrectly. It's listed as Tuesday, May 11th, but it's actually Thursday, May 11th, and it will follow the regular meeting on Tuesday, May 9th. And I would also let you know that on May 9th, we will also, at 5:30 PM, half an hour before our regular meeting time, meet to canvass the elections of the May 2nd levy election that we'll conduct in the district. Thank you.
Thanks. And now we move on to 6C, which is announcements from trustees. Any trustee Decker?
Just in case anyone is unaware, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the latest statistics around our nation say that something like 1 in 8 children is, in fact, abused or neglected. And so that means that out of every classroom of 24 third graders, we're talking about, you know, 3 children. And so around town, you might see blue pinwheels to remind you that this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Many organizations that are displaying those pinwheels also have little blue ribbons that you can wear, and people are asked to wear blue on Mondays throughout the month of April. So to just be aware and also thank those organizations for the hard work that they do.
Any other announcements from trustees? I have one, just in terms of showing how interconnected this community is. So Lowell School always has a carnival each year, but now that they're at Mount Jumbo, there was some concern that they wouldn't be able to have their carnival, and so Hellgate High School's National Honor Society decided they would make it happen for the kids at Hellgate High School, because it was a location they could get to. So they reached out to a number of different organizations to help with some donations, so they can provide pizza to the kids, and then they set up, I think, seven to 10. Anyway, it was a lot of activities, and they reached out to my Kiwanis group, which is how I heard about it, because we got a report back from one of the students, the high school students. They had 200 kids come to the carnival along with their parents, so probably around 400 folks were at the carnival, and it was all put together by high school kids over at Hellgate. So I just wanted to say it's pretty amazing to reach out to groups like Kiwanis to help sponsor it, and for them to think about the fact that Lowell was a little displaced this year, being out at Mount Jumbo, and so apparently everyone had a wonderful time. So thank you for, everybody for doing that. With that, if there are no other announcements, then we'll move on to Old Business, which is A1, which is the audit report for the period ending June 30th, 2016. This is information only. As you'll recall from the last board meeting, we heard an oral summary from a representative from Anderson Zermulon, who does our audit, as to the fact that there was nothing bad to report at all. It was a clean audit. However, the report, because of some time constraints, had only been out for public view or review for a short period of time, so it was recommended that we bring it back on as an information-only item for this month's meeting, as it's a pretty long report. And if anyone had had a chance to see it and wanted to make comments on it, or if any trustees wanted to discuss it, Pat's here as well to kind of remind us what the general nature of the report is, and then, you know, it may not generate a lot of conversation, but we wanted to make sure that this opportunity presented itself, so that everyone would have a chance to read it and actually kind of let the information sink in. So at this point, Pat, if there's, just want to hit quick highlights, and then we'll begin.
So the financial report is for FY 2016, and as Marcia, our Chair Holland, mentioned, it's a clean audit report, which is good. We had a nice report by Stephanie Fries from Anderson Zermulon, the partner on the audit, and she And as Marcia, our Chair Holland mentioned, it's a clean audit report, which is good. We had a nice report by Stephanie Fries from Anderson Zermulon, the partner on the audit. And she reviewed a number of items throughout the audit report and mentioned during that presentation to folks that if they do take a look at the audit report, which is daunting, it's a broad summary of a lot of information that you look at the notes and maybe you look at the M D N A, which is the Management Discussion and Analysis. The notes to the financial statements have more narrative and some information that Dan puts together that we put into the audit report that provides some statistical analysis. So, and I think if there are questions, it may be that we'd bring back answers if, depending on what they are, but we're happy to do that.
Are there any comments or questions for Pat? Seeing none. This is information only, but if there's any comments or public comment from anyone on the audit, we'd be happy to hear from anyone at this time? Okay. Seeing none, then thank you for getting that all packaged up and gotten to us. And it is also available on the website for anyone who needs something to read when you really can't sleep late at night. It's fascinating reading, but you really, I think, need Stephanie's interpretation to make it more understandable. But thank you. So we'll move on to A2, or A1, 8A1, which is Permission to Respond to OPI Adult Basic Education Requests for Proposal. And so I don't know, Pat, if you or Monique are going to set the background for this, but it sounds like OPI has made an opportunity available, and we want to at least take advantage of applying for something.
I guess what I would do, it's not the first time that the Adult Education Division has responded to an RFP. This happened a few years ago for some federal funds. It's sort of like applying for a grant, only this is probably quite a bit more involved. And it's new. It's something that OPI decided to do beginning this year. And I think I would turn it over to Mo, who may have some additional information to provide in addition to what's in the background, if that's right.
Monique, if you'd mind introducing yourself and explaining.
You bet. My name is Monique Fortman. I'm the Director of Missoula County Public Schools Adult Education Division. I am asking permission to respond to a request for proposals to be able to continue to operate our, what we call Academic Success Program through the Adult Education Division. In state language, they call it Adult Basic Education or Adult Basic and Literacy Education. We like to talk about success, so we call it the Academic Success Program. The last time we were required to request and submit a formal RFP was in 2008 under the Workforce Investment Act. With the new workforce, we owe a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, there we go. It requires a new RFP process. So what we are looking to do, to be able to maintain our current level of funds and services, we are responding to two separate RFPs. One is to continue to be able to serve our general population for those folks who are deficient of a high school diploma and wanting to earn their high school equivalency, or maybe they just need to brush up on skills and do some retraining for employment or do some college prep work. As well as the second piece, or the second RFP, is to continue to provide our English as a Second Language program. That program typically serves anywhere from about 30 to 40 non-native English speakers. However, with the new refugee settlement here in Missoula, we have more than doubled our numbers in that particular program. So I think right now, we're probably serving more than anyone else in the state, so it's pretty imperative that we do a good job on this one and get that money here in the community to help support those folks gaining their English and citizenship skills. Questions? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions, Monique, before we entertain a motion? Trustee Lorenson and then trustee Smith?
I was just wondering, is this a competitive, obviously, this is a competitive bid, and is it, do they divvied up by region, by locality, or?
So they, the RFP says that they will award 11 different grants across the state. Funding, the state has not even received a federal allocation yet, so we have absolutely no idea what the funding level will be. It is a competitive process. I have no idea if anyone else in our area is writing and planning on responding. So there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Any other questions for Monique? Oh, trustee Loren.
I think I heard you say this is to let you continue offering these programs. So is this basic funding that you're trying to reestablish, or is it extra?
So we are current, we currently receive state and federal funds to operate our Academic Success Program, and those funds expire June 30th. So for us to be able to continue providing those services and receive the federal and state funds, then we would have to be successful in this proposal. Does that answer it?
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Newbold?
Just out of curiosity, how many people participate in the program on an annual basis?
So in the last three years, we've served 1,800 students. So it averages out that we engage about 600 students a year in this particular venue. Some of them receive anywhere from 400 hours of services, and some of them receive maybe 12 hours of services. The funds that we receive for this particular program right now, we get about $480 per student in federal and state funds is all. We wish we had more.
Trustee Braxton?
So it's a competitive process. How confident are you that you will get the grant? And then, also, this might be more of a question for the administration, but what happens if we don't get it like that? Because I mean, especially you mentioned the refugee problems. That's going to continue to evolve, and even if that wasn't the case, this would still be something that we obviously need, so.
So I'd like to say I'm very confident that we will get the grant. Part of it is we have to show effectiveness in serving this population, and we do a very good job of doing that. We are one of the largest programs in the state, and the state has particular targets and measures they have to meet, and we are one of the primary programs that drives the state reaching those targets. So we have a high level of effectiveness in operating this program. With that in mind, it's still a competitive bid, so you really have two options. If we are not successful in it, I'm assuming there will be another organization in this community that will be successful in it, and they would then be providing those services. Those would not be services provided through Missoula County Public Schools. Should they not award to a provider here, the potential would be an instructor, a class fee associated with them. We're not really interested in that. We would prefer to be able to provide these services free of charge to this population.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees grant permission for the Adult Education Division to submit a response to OPI's Request for Proposal. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Smith?
I just want to say this, I hope that we do get this, and I'm looking forward to it, so thanks, Monique, for getting on top of this.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment?
Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of granting permission for the MCPS Adult Education Division to submit a response to OPI's RFP, Request for Proposal? Please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you, Monique, for taking time out to come and explain it. We appreciate it. Now we move on to 8A2, which is a SMART Schools 2020 Update. And Superintendent Thane said I can turn it over directly to you, Burley.
Yay.
Thank you.
Did I catch it by surprise?
No. You didn't want to talk about the track, huh? I'll start off by just kind of talking about where we're at. It's really, we're in a whirlwind of, and it seems like it's been that way the last couple of board meetings, but we still continue to be in the whirlwind of selecting general contractor or construction managers for numerous projects. Because the process is quite lengthy, it seems like it's been going on for a while, but it takes time. So the next board meeting, we'll have a recommendation for GCCM for Washington, and then the May 9th board meeting, we'll have a recommendation for GCCM for Willard and Russell, and then we should be done for a little while, so on the general contractor side of it, and we'll just get to work. We've also been working on a lot of logistics internally with summer moves and summer roofing projects. We get into mechanical systems at Jefferson, so a lot of logistical work going on with Hellgate and how those moves are going to take place, how we're going to get Lowell and Franklin back, and then some of the things you'll see later in the agenda with phones and the F F D stuff. So a lot of little things going on here and there, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Would you like me to proceed into the track? Sure. So we have been in constant contact with Benyon, who is sister company, I suppose, with Field Turf. I'm not sure how they're related, but it's our contracts with Field Turf, but we've been working with the Benyon folks on this track. And, you know, they've been very good to work with. I think that they've, it's just been an unfortunate process with this weather. It truly has been. I don't think we would, I would, there's absolutely no one to blame with having the track not ready at this point. It's really Mother Nature. With it being so sensitive to temperatures, we just haven't had that window of opportunity to get the, to get the track servicing going. They do plan on sending a team over to Missoula after Easter, and we'll start seeing a lot of onesies. So a lot of one day here, one day there, getting what they can done over a single day rather than looking at a three or four or five-day window. We're kind of at that point where we have to just get it going and hope for the best with the weather. So, you know, we keep a close eye on the weather on a daily basis. I think I got, you know, I've had texts every weekend from Mark, so, on the weather, so. But it's amazing how quickly it changes. I mean, we all know Montana, but until you look at it every single day, it's amazing how often it changes. And, you know, it's true. So it's a frustrating process for the district. It's frustrating for Field Turf. It's frustrating for our athletes and our coaches and our community members. So, you know, we're doing everything we possibly can to make it work.
One addition I would make, in a conference call with the vendor a week or so ago, they're actually seeking alternative solutions also. They were talking with a chemist about how they could change the ratio of the catalyst they put in the epoxy so that the cure time could be reduced to take advantage of the opportunities they have in Missoula. And of course, they're concerned primarily about temperatures being over 50 degrees and rising while they apply the product, and then remaining above 50 degrees while it cures for a few hours, and then staying above freezing at night and not having any moisture on it. So I referenced before the meeting that it had been over 170 days between 60-degree-high recordings in Missoula. We hit our first official 60-degree high last week. So we do continue to watch the weather. I think the vendor's more than willing to come work with us, and we do hope that we'll see some progress potentially as early as next week on the track. There are three coats of epoxy that need to go down, and then they can actually stripe the track. And they have shipped the product to Missoula, and Burley found space in the warehouses so that it could stay in a heated environment, which will also assist with the application. So everybody, I think, is working hard trying to do what they can to make this successful. But we also recognize we don't want to compromise the integrity of the surface by pushing the envelope too much.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Lorenson and then trustee Smith?
So I think I saw a headline that said State Track is moved to Laurel. Is that State double-A track?
We were scheduled to host the State A and C Track Meet Memorial Day Weekend, and that, as of this afternoon, at 1:30, was moved to Laurel.
I was just wondering if the different process, doing the onesie, one a day here, and all that, is going to affect the warranty at all? Are we, I'm hoping that we don't ever have to test that, but how are they backing up there? Well, they like to see, you know, a larger portion of the track getting completed over a couple-day process. So what they might do is, they've talked about reducing, so instead of taking the material and spending four or five hours or six hours spreading it, and then hoping to keep the temperatures above 50 for the next six to eight hours for cure time, they would maybe lay product for two or three hours. So they would reduce the amount of time that they're laying product, so they have those warmer temperatures to cure it. But that won't affect the warranty, is what I'm saying? No, it won't affect the warranty at all. So, and we've been in constant contact with them because we're currently using some parts of the field and track as, for track practice and stuff right now, and to make sure we understand the warranties and that we're not going to avoid any of those warranties. And we've, we're good. We've had verbals and written communication with them that everything we're doing right now is within warranty and everything we're looking at forward on how the association's going to go will be within warranty as well. Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none. This is information only, but any public comment? Seeing none, then thanks, Burley. And I was optimistic at the last board meeting, and then we hit the rain, sleet, snow, gravel week of weather. So we move on to 8A3, which is to approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements. Looks like Russ is going to explain that we were looking at replacements for the 2017-2018 school year, and the recommendation is that we go with three different vendors for several different devices. So if you want to walk us through the details on that, Russ, thanks.
So this is the culmination of a several-month process with a lot of the schools going through their inventories, working with their individual school budgets to determine what devices they want in their schools for the upcoming year. We've kind of refined the process from last year, and we'll continue to do that year after year. The District Tech Committee's been very helpful in trying to find out things that are good about it and things that we need to improve. And I think we've made some great progress this year. I think probably the biggest positive feedback that we received is that schools get to see their five-year outlook, so they know what's due for replacement this year as well as the next five years, and it allows them to plan accordingly. And that's the big thing that we're trying to focus on, is trying to get some sustainability with devices, so they know whatever's there today, they can count on five years from now. Some of the challenges that have come up that I do want to bring to everyone's attention is the fact that our budget's based on a three-to-one device ratio, and the hope is that it gets to two-to-one by 2019. That's the plan, not a hope. We will get there by 2019. The majority of our schools are already, in fact, every one of our schools, excuse me, the district average is already at a two-to-one. Half of our schools are already below a two-to-one average. Some of our schools are at a one-to-one average. The reason I bring that up is the only way you can get to that is through additional funding, grants, donations, Title I funding. So this is the first year, to my knowledge, that this has ever happened in Missoula, most likely because five years ago, I don't think the ratios were where they're at today. But this is the first year that schools are having to face the fact that if they're at a one-to-one device ratio and the budget is for three-to-one, the budget won't cover the number of devices they want to replace. So it's been challenging for some schools to address that. It's also been quite positive in other areas. I will mention, I, for example, I went to Seeley Lake and spoke with Dr. Pecora and a member of her tech committee, and it was an amazing process. I recorded it because during that conversation, we said, well, you're at one-to-one. If you want to continue at one-to-one, we'll have some conversation, we'll talk about these options. If that's not part of your curricular design to be at one-to-one, we can talk about other designs. And her comment was, well, a lot of these computers in this library don't get moved. So within about five minutes, they discussed on how they really don't need to be at one-to-one. It just happened, and they were able to realign the computers that they had in their school and not have a need to purchase those computers. And I think that's a win for the district. If they had a need to be at one-to-one, we definitely could have looked at some other options, but what they decided was there's some adjustments they can make internally where they didn't need to purchase those extra computers. So they eliminated a computer lab. So this process here is the counts from all the schools on what they plan to purchase for the upcoming year, and you can kind of see the breakdown. The reason we go with three vendors is we want it as competitive as possible, and the prices, once again, came in at numbers that we're quite happy with. So if there's any questions, I'll definitely entertain those.
Any questions for Russ? I have a few. So how many, these computers, are they distributed throughout all the schools in the district, high school and grade school?
in the district, high school and grade school?
Correct.
Okay. And then I guess you kind of, you kind of said how they were going to be distributed. Okay. If, if computers are taking, taken away from, you know, departments, are those computers going to be replaced? Or, you know, because I know there's a, there supposedly is a, you can only have computers for five years?
Yeah, essentially what it comes down to is the model that we're using at MCPS is that your total cost of ownership is what we're addressing. And after five years, you end up, it's, it's not a direct correlation. I don't want to make it sound like after five years, the computers die and it's a, it's a simple solution. It's challenging. But our, our philosophy is that after five years, we need to pull those from inventory for several reasons. One is that they tend to take a lot more work to maintain, just like an old car. The older the device gets, the more work it requires. You also start running into security issues as far as can that device have the latest updates? You also start running into compatibility issues with software. Can that device even run the current software that's out there? We're focusing on the fact that whatever's in your classroom at the start of school, we want to ensure will be there at the end of school. And the challenge is that districts have faced that have gone beyond, beyond the five year replacement cycle is that if those computers die around December or any time during the year and you don't have the funds to replace them, that's a big impact on a teacher. If you've been using devices in your classroom and all of a sudden mid-year they go away, now you have to make a mid-year adjustment and that's challenging. And that's truly the reason why we focus on a five-year replacement. So what we do after five years is we, we do remove those from inventory. We bring them back to the ISC department and we're currently working on a laptop donation program to the community. So the hope is by next fall, in fact, Willard's going to be our pilot school on that. By next fall, we'll be able to take those devices that are no longer serviceable in our district and give them back to the community for needy kids.
Okay, so, so what happens with, what happens with the class or that, that has these computers and these computers are now five years old and their whole structure of the class that they have is based on computers? What happens to that class if those computers are five years old and they're taken away from them and they haven't been as one of the, the classes that was, been designated to receive some of these new computers?
That's the strength of our building tech committees is that, and, and that's kind of what we like most about this process is the IT department is not making those decisions for schools. We're providing them with the budget where they can go to their building tech committees and work with their principals to decide in our building, these are the devices that are due for replacement, which ones do we want to replace? Very seldom have, in fact, I'm trying to think to make sure I can say this correctly. Seeley Lake might be the one school that's had the adjustment where a lab has been removed. Very seldom has, has there been a situation where a lab was due for replacement and it didn't get replaced. So the other thing I'll mention, the way the budget's based is it's based on an average device cost of $500. And that's based on industry standards, but that's for all devices. Laptops are a little bit more than that. They came in at $599. Desktops are slightly below that at $442. But Chromebooks came in at $150. Last year they were $200. So it gives the school the flexibility to go below that three to one ratio by choosing different devices. So one solution to that problem that schools have is to go with Chromebooks. They're a great solution in certain areas and they can supplement their devices with lower cost devices.
Okay, so then, then again, the disposal or the removal of the computers from, from a room or a classroom, that is basically at the discretion of the, the principal of the school?
Correct.
Okay. And does that principal have the authority to make the decision of what's going to happen to those computers? Or is that, or is that brought to a level where there's a group that discusses that?
Well, the disposal of computers in school districts is challenging due to the data privacy that's on that computer. So we, I don't want to say we can't allow them to make the choice of where they go, but we're responsible for what happens with that data. So we need to bring those back. You have to actually wipe the data, has to be registered, not registered, but you have to confirm with, what we plan to do is can, work with LMG Security in Missoula to confirm that this data has been released before they go back to the community. So it's a, it's a pretty in-depth process to actually give a computer away from a district. Unfortunately, most school districts in the state of Montana just throw them away. They're destroyed for that reason.
Okay. All right. And so then just to, just to, just to reemphasize again, that the, it's at the discretion of, if the computers are like five years old, is it at the discretion of the, the principal to, to remove them? Or is that going to be just standard practice that, that happens because they're five years old?
Yeah, after five years, they have to be removed as district procedure.
Okay.
So if the, if the principal requests that we keep them longer, that's, that's not acceptable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, trustee Newbold?
Can you explain Chromebooks and Chromeboxes for us?
You bet. So Chromebooks is just low-cost laptop. It's what most people are familiar with. A Chromebox is the desktop version of that. So it's, it's the exact same operating system in a little box that you mount to the back of a monitor. So for example, CS Porter, excuse me, Meadow Hill was the first school in our district to adopt a lab of Chromeboxes. And usually what you do is if you have a situation where you have a la, or you have a, a location where the students always come to and want to sit down and work on a computer, a laptop is not a good scenario because the batteries don't last. And that's, that's a given. It's a lithium battery, it will die after two, just like your cell phone. So unless you truly have a need for mobility, a laptop's not a good solution. So the Chromebox gives you the, the low-cost advantage of a Chromebook, but with a keyboard and a monitor. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thanks, Russ. And so I'm just going to read this pretty thoroughly. So the recommendation from the panel and the administration is that the purchase of all staff and student laptops, staff and student desktops, tablet and laptop combos, Chromeboxes and 14-inch Chromebooks are purchased through Information Technology Core and that the purchase of all staff and student standard Chromebooks would be through First Call Computer Solution and that the purchase of all staff and student Surface 4 Pros would be through CDW. And so the recommendation is that the trustees approve the purchase of the student and staff devices from Information Technology Core, First Call Computer Solution and CDW. So is there a motion to approve the purchase of the student and staff devices from these three vendors? Moved by trustee Newbold and seconded by trustee Brechtstad. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the purchase of student and staff device replacements through these three vendors, Information Technology Core, First Call Computers Solutions and CDW, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And thanks for being here, Russ. Again, congratulations on the accolades. And also thank you to the, the staff that was involved in this process, both at the building level and within your department. It looks like it was a bit time consuming. So thank you so much. And so we move on to four, which is to award the bid for district-wide copier services. And I see that Dan is here and Pat is here to explain why the recommendation is that we go with a vendor that isn't the lowest bidder, but there's a very good reason for choosing that vendor over others. And so I don't know which of you would like to offer the explanation.
Thank you. And so the, we asked four vendors to provide responses at various alternatives without a fax, low feature, with fax, low feature, without fax, feature-rich. And so we have with fax or without fax, feature-rich and with fax, feature-rich. We had two responses, one from OS2, one from Kelly Imaging. And our responses to the RFP. And so the, so the recommendation is for the OS2 without fax, feature-rich copier. The differences between the basic and the feature-rich module, model is explained in the background section. Primarily, there's much greater speed, copier per minute, the, the built-in Wi-Fi slide-out keyboard and, and screen size as examples. The, the bids were excellent, even with the, this copier type, we're looking at over $7,000 per year less in cost to, for the lease with these greater features. We also anticipate savings or the potential opportunity for savings within the buildings because these are networkable copiers so that the buildings in follow-up to what Russ was talking about in, in equipment have the capacity to minimize or eliminate printers. And printers are supported, much of the maintenance and, and toner costs by the building level discretionary funds. So by using and utilizing these copiers, that opportunity will exist because they'll be networked. The, the, the replacement I just pointed out is, this is something that we look at every four or five years. And so we're, we're pleased with the opportunity. I want to thank Russ and Dan for, for their work and, and Dan in primarily running this, this bidding process here. So Dan, was there anything else you wanted to add to supplement that? You might have to jump to a microphone if you...
Any questions for Pat or Dan? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. If I remember correctly, the district has a central printing facility that does a significant amount of printing, but then there also are copiers in all the buildings. Is this the central printers or is this the ones in the buildings?
These are the ones in the buildings.
In all the buildings?
Correct.
So that we're, are we replacing actual machines in all the buildings with this?
Correct.
And how many machines is that?
Um, Dan, do you know how many machines?
Yes, it's a fleet of 35. 25 are what's called a segment three copier, kind of the one you see down at the end of the hall here. So...
And staff are encouraged to use the central facility because that's significantly cheaper, but this is going to make it easier to print in the buildings too?
Yeah, because you can't totally eliminate the copiers in the buildings. And, and what's interesting with the, the prices that, that are shown here is that these copiers will be really competitive with print shop copiers. And, and so that's, that's also good for the building budgets. And, but there are things that these copiers won't be able to do that the print shop will be doing. I mean, the, the larger projects, the print shop is most definitely the, the place to go. So this is day-to-day business. One feature about central printing that's been, or copying that's been an issue, or excuse me, one issue with printing to a copier that's been an issue in the past is just the confidentiality of certain information that's sent to a central copier as a printing device. And these machines have the capability to input a code so that nothing is printed until you arrive at the, at the copier, you input the four-digit code and then it'll print out your, your, your job while you're there. And at a, and a high speed.
One last question, sorry. I noticed that there's a price break after the first 4.8 million copies. How many copies are we making these days?
With these machines, about 5 million.
Per month?
Per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
Total across the district?
Yeah, yeah, across the district.
5 million a year with these, with those 35 copiers across the district?
That's right.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Pat or Dan before I entertain a motion? I have one question, just in terms of central printers, and maybe it's more for Russ than Pat or Dan, but if these printers can also network, is it possible to put a printer in a more central location if they can be networked so that you don't have to have as many printers in a building? Or is that, am I misunderstanding the networking opportunities?
No, you're actually 100% correct. And that's the conversation Dan and I had was now that these are networked, if you look at, and we're just referring to printers that are in offices, not printers that are in wings of classrooms or libraries or computer labs. But printers in offices may not be necessary if we have these things networked. So that's kind of the plan is we'd be able to decrease that fleet as well. The nice thing about it is because of the cost breakdown on these printers, if we did remove the IT department's printers, that price will drop as well. We average about one and a half to two, up, sometimes up to three cents per copy. So if we're able to send those copies to this fleet, it'll drop those costs by a third to possibly a sixth.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees award the bid for copier services for, for four years to office solutions and services for the non-fax feature-rich copiers with the price breakout that is in our agenda. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Oh, trustee Smith?
I'm going to vote for this even though I really hope we can get by without faxing. I, I hope we still have Morse code ability.
Any other board discussion? I just have one comment. It's always amazing to figure out how technology has changed and how things, just the discussion about Chromebooks and copiers and things like that. It's amazing how prices look so different than they did even five years ago. So thank you for all the hard work, Dan and Russ, to kind of price this all out. Looks like it was a bit of a job. So we have a seconded motion, Elizabeth? So any other board discussion other than my comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of awarding the bid for copier services for four years to office solutions and services for the type of copiers identified in the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees present. And thanks again for all the hard work. We really appreciate it. And so now we'll move on to five, which is to award the bid for Franklin Elementary Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. So this is an elementary-only item, so be motioned by an elementary trustee. And so background information is that it looks like you send out bids for the furniture, fixtures and equipment. And it looks like different things are going to be awarded to different folks. So if you can walk us through how that breakout happened, Burley?
Yeah, thanks. So the district had LaRue Page Warner, who is the design firm that's on, on Franklin. They actually assisted Amy with, with their FFE package. So they spent many hours together going over what their needs were for, for their facility. As I stated in a previous board meeting, they did go through their current facilities and, and really look at what they can take with them to reduce some costs that were still in really good shape. I don't know to what extent that is, but I feel like with the bids we received, they'll, I'm guessing they're going to be taking some. But I think you'll be pleasantly surprised when you tour the building and we're all complete of, of how much new furniture they did receive. So anything else, I'd be happy to answer. It's, I will, I will say we had three total bids. And as you'll see with the, with the Lowell and the Franklin, all three companies got some, some, some part of it, which was, was great to see.
Any questions, trustee Lorenzen?
I see this, this one for Franklin lists the company of Montana School Equipment and the company of 360 Office Solutions. Can you tell us about those? Are they local companies? Are they franchises?
I know Montana School Equipment has a local presence. They have, I think they're based out of Great Falls, but they've, they've had a presence in, a local presence where they have some, I don't know if they have an office, but they have someone who worked here for 20-some years. He actually just retired, maybe even longer than that. So, but there's a, there's a new person. So they're, they're, in my opinion, very local. And 360 Office Solutions is also a local company. I'm not sure if they're a franchise or, or what they are, but they are local to Missoula.
Any other questions? I just have one about the procedure. So you got three bids in and companies could bid on different parts of the materials they'd be providing. And so it looks like, for example, Montana School Equipment was low bid on classroom and seating. And Montana Schools Equipment was also the low bid for library and shelving. And then 360 Office Solution was administrative. And so each of those companies might have put a bid in for those other items as well, but you determined which ones were the low, the best value for those specific categories of furniture and equipment? Is that how it worked?
Yeah, that's, that is correct. We had, there was actually a fourth bidding requirement, which was signage, like restroom signs, that kind of stuff. But no one bid on that, so we're, we're looking at other services for that. But, but yes, we had, we had them broken down in, in these categories, classroom and seating, library and shelving and administrative. But it doesn't mean that every company bid on all three of those. So some companies only bid on, on, on one, I believe it was, it was on the Franklin Lowell Project, I'm sorry, Missoula Office City got the administrative bid. And they, that was the only bid they put in, was on the administrative side.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees award the above-referenced vendors for Franklin's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. So for classroom and seating, it's Montana School Equipment; for library and shelving, it's Montana School Equipment also, and for administrative, it's 360 Office Solutions. And so I entertain a motion that we, that the district award the above-referenced vendors for these items, and it's elementary-only trustees. Moved by trustee McDonald, seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any discussion, board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of awarding the referenced, awarding the contracts to the above-referenced vendors for Franklin's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees. And now we'll be taking on the item listed in the agenda, which is, we'll call it 8AVA, which is to award the bid for Lowell Elementary Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. And again, it's essentially the same information. The recommendation is that for classroom and seating, Montana School Equipment; for library and shelving, 360 Office Solutions; and for administrative, Missoula City Office. And anything different about this other than there's slightly different vendors?
Yeah, no, I don't have anything else to add.
Is there any board questions? Seeing none, is there a motion by an elementary trustee to award the above-referenced vendors for Lowell's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment? And that would be to Montana School Equipment, 360 Office Solutions, and Missoula City Office. Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee McDonald. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of awarding the identified vendors for Lowell's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to elementary trustees present? Thanks. And then we move on to what's in the agenda as number six, which is to award a bid for a partial re-roof at Lowell Elementary. And again, it's elementary action item only, and so it looks like you got two bids. One came in at 148 and the other one came in at 13777. And the recommendation is that the trustees award to Schrock, is that Schrock?
Yes.
Roofing, the partial re-roofing project at the Lowell School in the amount of $130,777. And Burley, any specific information about this, other than we've seen a lot of re-roofing projects?
Yeah, I'll kind of just jump, because I might have this question come up. You don't see some of the regular names that we've seen in some of our roofing projects. This is a little bit different of a project. This is a shingles rather than a flat roof, and so I think it brought out a different kind of contractor. And so it's good to see some new names, and any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion from an elementary trustee that the district awards Schrock Roofing with the partial re-roof project at Lowell in the amount of $130,777? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of awarding Schrock Roofing with the re-roofing project, or the partial re-roofing project at Lowell, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present? Thanks so much. And then we move on to seven, which is to grant permission to seek quotes for a District wide IP telephone system. And so what's an IP telephone system, Burley?
It's a voice-over internet protocol, I believe. Where's Russ go? But yeah, it's an IP computer-based system rather than an analog T1 line kind of thing. So it's 21st century.
Seventeen years into it, but...
Yeah.
Anyway, it looks like in the background information that initially the project was, or initially you were looking to see if you could kind of have redundant systems in place, and it looks like that isn't really possible, but you're able to find that, we currently use a Mitel system, and you found someone who can replace the Mitel system, so it is a less complicated transition? Am I reading the background information correctly?
Yeah, it's a pretty confusing story. We worked with Access Consulting as our design firm to kind of help us, guide us through this process, and we currently have a Mitel system. And we want to phase a new IP system in over the course of the bond projects, over the three to four years, where we're not doing it all at once. To do that, we wanted to make sure that we could run our Mitel system at the same time as, whether it's a different company system or with another Mitel vendor. The Mitel system we currently have is no longer being supported with software or with service, and it has been that way for quite some time. And kudos to my trades guys, Keaton Serot and Bruce Mixx, for keeping that system up and running, because it's been quite a feat. So what we decided to do was, is to do a request for information, an RFI, to solicit information from other companies to see if they would be able to run their system against, simultaneously with our Mitel system and not have any interruptions, and a fluid process. We had three firms respond, and with the information they gave us, we followed up with some more questions. And really, the consensus of the committee was that it just really wasn't a very good fit. There were some things we would lose. One system, one company said they could do it, but we'd lose all of our caller ID function. That caller ID function plays an important role in the school district where we can trace phone calls if we had a situation where we need to trace phone calls. There's some safety aspects to it. And then, you know, it became pretty clear to us with their information that they just couldn't run it side-by-side and have it run pretty fluid with no interruptions. So we chose to go through this National Joint Powers Alliance, which is a national pre-bid for services for this process. So we would put that out to Mitel, and all Mitel dealers independently can bid on it. And so we would look to be doing that, and I think we would get, you know, anywhere between seven to 10 responses within the, kind of the Pacific Northwest and beyond. So we think we should be getting some good competition for that.
Thanks. Any questions for Burley? Thanks for that explanation. It's a little hard to kind of figure out what was going on. And so the recommendation is that we grant, the trustees grant permission to seek quotes using the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is the cooperative purchasing program for the district-wide IP telephone system. Is that what we're doing?
Right, and then what we would do is we would bring those quotes back to the board once we receive them.
Thanks. So is there a motion from a trustee to grant permission to seek quotes for a district-wide IP telephone system using the NJPA program? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of granting permission to seek quotes for the district, a district-wide IP telephone system using the NJPA program, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present? Thanks. And then we move on. We move on to B1, which is the Personnel Report, beginning on page 23. This is...
We've got one important thing to do.
Oh, golly, this would be really bad if we didn't do this one. Super bad, super, super bad. We'll go on to number eight. Number eight has a closing date for tomorrow. So, anyway, number eight is to approve Resolution 2017-10E, which authorizes the execution of all documents to close the purchase of the property for the new Cold Springs School. So since it's Cold Springs, it's elementary only, and so what the administration is seeking is that the trustees adopt the attached Resolution 2017-10E, which would authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute all the closing documents associated with the purchase of the subject property. And as I mentioned, the closing of the purchase is scheduled for tomorrow. So is there any questions of the administration before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, is there a motion from an elementary trustee that the trustees adopt the attached Resolution 2017-10E, authorizing the superintendent or his designee to execute the closing documents associated with the purchase of the property for the new Cold Springs School? Moved by trustee Newbold, seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of adopting the attached Resolution 2017-10E, which would authorize the superintendent or his designee to execute closing documents associated with the purchase of the property for the replacement for the Cold Springs School, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees, and then...
And if I would just remind the elementary trustees that Pat is going to need to get signatures from each elementary trustee this evening before you leave, so if you'd please make sure you do that.
Thank you, that's a good point. Okay, now we'll turn it over to Dave. Sorry, I leapt ahead. And so on page, beginning on page 23 is the Personnel Report. It indicates that it's information-only, but I think it really is an action item, because we actually take action on these each month. And so the recommendation is that the trustees approve the items on the provided Personnel Report, and just as an explanation, we don't have any trustee comment or public comment on particular individuals in the Personnel Report, but any general questions for Dave, we can entertain now, and then any general comments, we would entertain after there's a motion. Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, then is there a motion that the trustees approve the items on the provided Personnel Report? Moved by trustee Newbold and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion generally? Seeing none, any public comment on general topics of personnel? Seeing none, then all those trustees in favor of approving the items on the provided Personnel Report, which is for the last month, is that correct?
Yes.
Please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. Then we move on to two, which is to approve the Sealy-Swan High School 2017-2018 school year calendars. This is secondary, and so Dave is going to explain. I think we adopt calendars for the high school, for the elementary schools, for Sealy-Swan, and then for Willard, and they don't always completely line up.
That's correct. And so we had two outstanding ones. This is one of the two we still have Willard to approve, which hopefully will be back at our first main meeting. But this is for the Sealy-Swan High School. Their calendar is different, as you know, they have a four-day-a-week schedule, so they met and made sure they met with the criteria, meaning 1,080 minutes, and presented this.
Any...
I mean, hours, yeah, 1,080.
I was going to say minutes, wow. School, yeah, I was going to say. I might go back to school. Are there any questions of Dave? Trustee Kendall?
Given that it's a four-day week, what does it mean on those days when it says, "Staff Development Prep Day, No School"? How are things different, like October 20th and, maybe that's the only one? No, and August? Wait, that's before school starts. I guess it's just October 20th that I'm wondering about. Is there another one?
The 19th and 20th are MEA days under a contract for all employees.
So those would be days at Sealy when kids just wouldn't go to the building?
Correct. I don't believe they would have been there on the Friday, but the 19th would.
But they talked to us about how they actually, kids go to school if they need help on Fridays and stuff, so on that day, they just wouldn't.
That would be correct, because the staff would be...
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Dave? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Sealy-Swan High School calendar for next year's 2017-2018 school year? Moved by trustee Dupree, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Actually, we'll give it trustee Brakesdade. So any board discussion? Just because they all live closer to Sealy-Swan than I do. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the Sealy-Swan High School 2017-2018 school year calendar, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. Then we move on to an information-only item, which is School Day Committee White Paper. Superintendent Thane, if you want to walk us through in a little bit more detailed background information about this item?
Certainly, and I'll actually be somewhat brief. Most of you are well aware that we have, over the course of the last five months, had a committee that's been studying the school day and particularly high school start times. The board and the administration have been approached a number of times in recent years to address this question. And unfortunately, I think the tendency we've had is to simply identify some significant hurdles and not actually move forward and discuss the merits of a later start time. So last spring, we were approached again, and the determination I made was that it was time to actually study the issue and essentially set the hurdles aside so that we could actually make a judgment and determine whether there's a compelling reason for us to consider a different school day, and particularly, again, a high school start time. So we retained Ginny Tribe to facilitate the group. We identified all the various interests that we thought needed to be represented at the table, certified, classified, parents, students, a variety of departments around the district. We invited all the high schools to participate. Essentially, it became the three urban high schools, because both Sealy and Willard operate with alternative calendars and alternative days for their school year. We had some spirited discussion. We spent a lot of time reading literature, but I think one of the most important decisions that we made was to develop a set of guiding principles that I would highlight, and they begin on page 32 of the document, and there are four of them. Number one, we believe our community values the healthy development of our children. Number two, we believe the academic growth, physical health, and social and emotional well-being of all students are priorities of MCPS. Number three, we make decisions based on research and data. And number four, we recognize that a schedule change, such as a later start time, will create challenges for which we are willing to work diligently to find solutions. Ultimately, we could have had the committee get into the nuances of the potential hurdles. Instead, what we did is identified that they exist, but essentially wanted to come back to one fundamental question, and that is, is there a compelling reason to consider a change to the high school start time? I'm not going to go into great detail tonight, but my interest was to approach this in a fashion similar to the way we would approach significant change in policy. We want to present it as an information item so that we can get it in your hands and get it posted to the district website, so the general public can become informed. Then we will come back to the Board of Trustees May 9th at our regular board meeting, and the committee will make a presentation. And ultimately, at that point, we would like to engage trustees and the general public in a conversation in this regard. I would say that we approached this and had a lot of divergent opinions around the table. Ultimately, when we got to our final meeting, there was unanimous consensus in support of the white paper, as you find it presented in the packet. One of the considerations that we felt was important was, rather than first broach this at a school board meeting, and again, the school board and administration is really the intended audience for this version of the paper, we wanted to have conversations out in each of the urban high schools, because those would be where we would see the greatest impacts. And over the course of the last three weeks, Janice Bishop, who is a committee member, is a retired teacher and retired MEA president. Janice and I went to each of the three urban high schools. At Sentinel, we were joined by Gary Stein, who was a member of the committee. At Hellgate, we were joined by Britt Hanford, who was a member of the committee. We did a brief presentation. We asked all staff members in advance to read an article from the Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics to develop some background knowledge. We engaged in discussion about that specific article and then about the white paper, and ultimately took a survey of the staff members in each high school. And overwhelmingly, in all three high school sites, we had strong support for consideration of an alternative high school start time. We, again, will wait for about a month to have this conversation in a more robust way in front of the board. But ultimately, what I would envision happening is, once you have your conversation, I would like you to consider directing the administration to pursue this or not to pursue this. We recognize that not only are there potentially some hurdles that we overcome, and I really like the guiding principle that we're willing, if it's the will of the board and the community, to tackle... will of the board and the community, to tackle those hurdles. But I do also recognize that there might be financial considerations. For example, if we have to alter significantly our busing plans in order to affect any positive change in start times, then that's a consideration that the board will ultimately have to weigh. But at this point in time, unless there are some significant questions, I would like to just simply leave it at that, give you a month to review the white paper. I submitted to you previously the article from the American Academy of Pediatrics. That's just one of many groups who have weighed in on the subject. Others include the American Medical Association, the Center for Disease Control, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the Society of Pediatric Nurses, and basically all those groups say that a later high school start time is important for adolescents. We actually made a concerted effort as a committee to go out and find opposing perspectives, and we were unsuccessful in finding that. So I look forward to the conversation on May 9, but if there are any questions in the interim, I would entertain them, and certainly I would encourage the viewing audience or the listening audience to access the white paper on our website. We hope to post it tomorrow, so that they too can engage in the conversation.
Any questions? Trustee Decker, and then trustee McDonald? Okay. Yeah, just, I mean, it's information only, so it's comments, questions, but since there's no vote, there won't be that weird breakdown in questions then comments.
Got it. Okay. I just want to compliment the process. I think many of the things that we learn over time about what is actually best practice with children are fraught and sometimes in opposition to the way things have been done, and change is hard. And so I'm very encouraged by the process that really tried to set those things aside and say, what really is the science telling us about best practice in this regard? Because I think that process can apply to many types of decisions that also have hurdles associated with them, related to all kinds of developmentally appropriate practices that affect children. So thank you for the process.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions on that. How would that, would that compromise any of the sports, the after-school sports, and the time of how dark it gets when, you know, some of those sports are going on?
That will be one of the considerations. And again, there are a number of potential hurdles that we've identified, but I do think there are solutions to those hurdles. And I believe that it would be appropriate for us to fully discuss those when we come together in May. So I would encourage you to make notes, keep those questions, and I would like to have committee members present also for that conversation.
Trustee Lorenzen?
Yeah. What is zero period, and how commonly is it used, and how much earlier does it start than normal start time?
Excellent questions. We do have some zero-period classes in two of our high schools presently, and it's essentially just what you would expect it to be. It's the period that comes before first period. And first period in our urban high schools right now starts at 7:50 a.m. For those students that travel great distances, many of them board buses well before 7:00 a.m., and those buses primarily drop at our high schools between 7:25 and 7:30. Zero period right now for traffic education and certain other courses generally begins at 7:00 a.m. and runs until 7:50, when first period begins. I would say that, no, I won't say it. I'll save it for May 9.
Any other questions, trustee Kendall?
Just another comment. I would love to say more, but I will, I will not. But I do want to echo Grace's comments and just thank you, Superintendent Thane, for doing a great job with this committee. It was a really, really interesting process, a really great committee, and Ginny Tribe is just so wonderful, and she's so great to work with, and she really brings out, you know, issues and makes it fun for everybody, and I just thought it was really well done, and I'm glad to have been a part of it. And I look forward to the community discussion that's going to follow.
Thanks. Trustee Smith?
I'll just really quickly echo what trustee Kendall said, and also I just want to give a shout out to all the people that were on the committee. I appreciate all the time. There's a lot of, five, five meetings have we had? Five, two-hour meetings at least, with a lot of homework that most of us did, most of the time. Thanks for everyone, and now especially thanks to Ginny Tribe for doing that.
Any other trustee comments or questions? Seeing none. Any public comment? And again, if you have an unusual spelling of your name, just spell it for us, and if you represent any organization or entity, let us know.
I have to spell my name? Okay. My, my name is Atticus Lonski, and should I spell that? Yeah. A-T-T-I-C-U-S-L-O-N-S-K-I. All right. And I'm a freshman at high school, I mean Hellgate High School. And I'm here because I'm always tired during school, and it's really difficult to concentrate when I'm tired. So this makes me mad, because I want to do the best I can in school. And this decision is an opportunity for the school board to show that they truly care about students and their success. The studies supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Medical Association, the American Sleep Association, and Centers for Disease Control show that when school starts after 8:30 a.m., students not only do better in school, but there is better school attendance, improved learning, fewer traffic accidents, and less substance abuse. If the school board sets later start times, it will communicate to the students that they really care about them and improve their lives and future.
And if you have an unusual name, if you want to spell it, otherwise, if you want to say your name?
Uh, okay. My name's Hugo Lonski. I go to Washington Middle School, and I'm a seventh grader. Tonight is a night for people to decide if they care more about convenience or if they look at the studies and do what is best for children and their education. I hope that you consider setting back the school start times, because I would like for the next generation to be smart, critical thinkers that make a change in a positive way, and we can't have that if nobody is being educated to their maximum potential. Studies show that later start times improve children's attention spans, memory health, or memory, health, and safety. They also show that kids who get more sleep are less likely to use drugs and alcohol. Even if school's start times are later, student bedtimes do not change, which results in more sleep. In conclusion, I believe that starting later will help Missoula students, and that is your responsibility as a trustee.
Any other public comment?
That's a tough act to follow. Thank you, boys. I'm Julie Merritt. That's M-E-R-R-I-T-T. I'm a parent of a now-seventh grader who will be looking at high school here far too soon. I too want to thank the administration for bringing this issue to the forefront, and for all the members of the committee, most of whom I think are probably not here tonight, but for all the hard work. I know that it's a topic that is probably going to get some pushback. I made the regrettable decision of reading the Facebook comments on the last Missoulian article about this topic, and you hear a lot of people with their comments of, you know, "I walk to school uphill both ways in the snow and everything, and by God, those lazy teenagers today should do the same thing." So I applaud you for looking at the possibility of doing something different, because change is hard, and I know there will be some challenges. But I think it is what's in the best interest of our kids, and I'm excited to see what comes next. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jenny Dixon. I was fortunate enough to be invited by Superintendent Thane to be part of the committee. And as Heidi and Mike said, it was, it was a really great experience, and I think that we all acknowledge that, as Julie said, it is going to be, there will inevitably be some challenges. So the reason I'm here is, my role is chapter leader of Start School Later Missoula. I run a Facebook page, and for the last year and a half, every two days, there's a post. And that is simply an educational kind of thing to let people know all of the information, such as what Atticus brought up, sounded very familiar. Those studies show those kind of things, and I want the community to be aware of that. I also run a Facebook, or a webpage for Start School Later Missoula, which allows people to see what's going on nationally, sign a national petition, learn all about the benefits of starting school later. And I know you all are going to be looking at this closely for the next couple of months. One of the things I want to, to do, and I have started to do, is to put together an online petition, and not in any way intended to rush the process or force your hand, but rather to really help inform you and to give you some support as you move forward. If you can see a strong voice in the community supporting this, I think that will help you as you move forward. I started it last week, being very respectful of the process that Superintendent Thane put together over the whole winter, so I wanted to wait until we were closer to this point. And in less than a week, the petition has performed better than 90% of online petitions. And we have, I think at this point, over 130, 150 signatures, somewhere in that area. I'm, I'm going to keep pushing for more and trying to get the word out, so that people get some, a knowledge base about this. Because what we experienced in the committee was a divergent set of opinions about all of this, and as Superintendent Thane said, by the end, there was unanimous agreement. And I remember at the beginning of that committee, Ginny asked me if I could be neutral on this topic. And I had to think about it for a minute, and my answer was, "I can't," because once you learn about this, you cannot deny it. So I'm hoping that that is your experience as well. But because I know there will be people who, who don't agree, if you feel like you want to have the support of a voice and a petition, I'd like to try to publicize that as much as possible. It's on our Facebook page for Start School Later Missoula, and trying to work with the different schools to let them know how parents and teachers and students even. I've seen a number of students have signed to the petition, so it's really wonderful. Thank you. And if you have any questions that I can help with, I would be happy to answer them now or at any time online. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Well, thank you for everyone. It is information only at this time, and at a later point, it will be a potential action item. But we'll, I think everyone appreciates that it's a big issue, so it needs to be a kind of thoughtfully considered, and so we'll begin that conversation in earnest at the May 9 meeting, it looks like. So with that, we're on to, let me get back to the agenda. I think that was the last item, other than going into executive session just to approve some minutes. And so now, as I indicated, we also have public comment on non-agenda items at the beginning and end of every meeting. Is there something we need to do? Is there something we forgot? Oh, okay. So is there any public comment on non-agenda items that we haven't touched upon yet? I mean, not agenda items, but comments you want to make on non-agenda items that you didn't make comments on at the beginning?
Yes, thank you. Again, Julie Merritt. I'm here also to say that I heard a rumor that the Franklin Playground equipment is going to remain at Jefferson, and that new equipment is going to be put in at Franklin School. And I know that that is not the venue to comment on that or answer questions, but I just want to say, for anyone who doesn't know, I am half of the team that raised over $65,000 to purchase and install the, that equipment at Franklin School. And we were promised, when the construction process started, that that equipment would stay there, or that it would get back there. I also, I guess, so obviously, this is something very personal for me. Julie McLennan and I spent close to three years raising those funds. We also had a very big beneficiary. The McGraths donated $25,000 of that $65,000 that we raised, and their name is on the sign that, that was put up when that playground was installed. And they donated that money because their daughter had been a student teacher at Franklin School, and she had a very wonderful experience there. And they, when time came for the, the playground fundraising, and they heard about it, they wanted to donate this money. So there, there's a personal thing there that they made a very significant donation. And I guess regardless of how it turns out with where the equipment ends up, I would hope that the McGraths' name is still associated with the playground equipment that is at Franklin, because that was their desire, was that that money that, that they donated was for Franklin School. So I just, there's some history there that some folks that are on the board now might not be aware of, and I just wanted to share that with you. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. And any other public comment on, on agenda items?
Good evening. Melanie Charleston, President of Missoula Education Association. I'm actually going to put in a little commercial for the Missoula Education Foundation. I sit on that board as their vice president, and we have an event coming up on Saturday, May 5. This is a fundraiser for the Missoula Education Foundation. If you are interested, it will be, again, that afternoon from 2:00 to 5:30 at the Missoula Country Club. I believe tickets are $45, and it's a Kentucky Derby Day theme. There'll be hat contests and all sorts of, guess the winner contests. And if you go to www.missoulaedfoundation.org, all one word, missoulaedfoundation.org, it's a new website for us. There's a link in there for tickets. So it'd be a great opportunity to service a foundation that truly is giving right-back back to our Missoula County school teachers and students. Thanks. Did you already say that?
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Yeah, it's N-E-R, B as in boy, O, V as in victor, I-G. I'll be at these meetings and always willing to hear anything you guys think is important and going on in the county. I'll be replacing Chelsea, who I hear is a pretty great act, so hopefully I'll do a good job. And I don't have a card or a phone number that I know off the top of my head right now, but I'm at Chelsea's old number, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Good. With that, we're going to go into executive session just to approve some minutes from, from earlier executive sessions. So it will be very brief, and I'll take minutes once we come out of executive session. So we'll take about a five-minute break to let everyone leave the room, and Elizabeth gather her stuff, and this will be really short.